This is a special meeting of the School Board of Kenosha Unified School District Number One. Notice of the special meeting was given to the public by forwarding a copy of the notice to all requesting radio stations and the Kenosha News. The purpose of the meeting is to go over the agenda. Would you please stand for the pledge? Roll call.
Ms. Adams. Mr. Bryan.
Here, go Packers.
Mrs. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Tierney.
Go Bears.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Price. Mrs. Madder.
Here. Okay, next we have the review of the agenda items. And the first one on the list is the Controlled Entrances Funding Options Update.
Yep, so I'll start and then Bill and Tarek, please feel free to join in. So this is really what we have right now is just an update as far as where things are. At the last board meeting, we went over some options for funding that we discussed a bit. And really before we were able to make a recommendation, which one of those options would make most sense, we need to really arrive at a... Determine the scope. We've been going over some of the plans and talking again and getting some updated numbers. And we hope to get...to come back with a much more definitive number here soon. The...and then at that time, we'll be able to make the recommendations. So we do have a Safety Committee meeting coming up next Monday. And at that time, we've invited the principals just to take one more look at those projects. And then we'll be able to make a recommendation for that, based on that. The next...the recommendation that we hope to bring to the board, not in September but in October, would be to have...right now, when we originally began the...looking at the Controlled Entrances at... Before the referendum, we began doing the design work for that. After the referendum was not successful, we paused that design work. So we'd be coming back in October with a recommendation, most likely for the funding, and for a...for the board to approve finishing that design work. Looking at the plumbing, looking at the HVAC, electrical, everything that would need to be done to get those Controlled Entrances finished and finalized, and those bids finalized, is what we would be asking, I believe it's Riley, most likely to continue, to complete that design work. So we will have...so this is a pretty brief update. I guess my message is that things are in the works. We need...we will be having those finalized coming up here in the next several weeks. And right now, what we're noticing, we had originally, and I want to preview this, when we originally came up with that twelve and a half million dollar estimate, we had been computing in...we figured in increasing cost of materials due to tariffs. That was right when we began hearing about tariffs going in. And we were anticipating that the cost of materials would be greater. So we're very hopeful that prices will continue to hold right where they're at. And we are expecting to see a significant reduction in the cost of materials and getting the Controlled Entrances in, which is very good, very good news. But I just wanted to explain that, and I'll be explaining that over and over again, because that's where we saw that...we figured that with the tariff cost in, we needed to build that into our price, and we're just not seeing it in the price of materials. So Bill or Tarek, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Think you pretty much covered it. So you'd be expecting a recommendation in October?
Yes.
So one question that occurred to me, I guess since we had the discussion last, and maybe this is something that you can come back with. If, in fact, you know, the recommendation, for example, is to go into reserves for the purpose of financing a project, say, the ten-year loan or the fifteen-year loan or whatever. We obviously pride ourselves in the fact that we have a healthy fund balance, which prevents us from going to short-term borrowing. I guess the question is, and it's kind of a moving target, target year to year, but is it possible to forecast whether, if we are going to fund balance each year to finance this project, will we still be able to avoid short-term borrowing by doing this project?
Yeah, that's a good question. So that's the behind-the-scenes work that I'm doing in our office. So that's our goal, is to come up with a financing plan that we would recommend that would still not trigger short-term borrowing. So when you're talking about planned use of reserves, the advantage of doing some kind of borrowing upfront is that you can pay it back gradually. So you're gradually spending down reserves instead of taking that big hit right away, which would trigger a short-term borrow. So we had that ten million number. A ten million dollar hit right away triggers short-term borrow.
Right.
But if you're spacing it out over several years, you're still using your reserves to pay off that debt, but gradually, and that's the ultimate goal, is you're a hundred percent right, is not to trigger that short-term borrowing reaction. So we're hopeful that we will have a plan that will conform to that.
And in that situation, would that impact like how much or how often we do contribute to reserves year to year?
No. We don't do planned contribution to reserves because we're over that threshold in the policy.
Okay.
So at the end of each fiscal year, you don't really have a choice. Whatever the ending surplus or deficit contributes or reduces from your general fund.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes. And my question always goes back to all the other doors in all the buildings. Will that be covered in this RFP for the buildings that don't have like some type of detector if the door is open?
Yeah, so there was...that was one of the other nine action items that were brought forward to the board. We still...we're moving on a lot of those things. Some of them, the Saper Schools Together contract is in place. We have not written that grant and submitted it, that we're talking about doing door, you know, like squalor alarms or whatever it is that we're able...you know, we have to look at prices and look at competitive options and that kind of thing. So applying for that grant is still...that's still...we're still working on it. We did implement the rule, all doors have to be closed and locked. Turns out that raised a lot of questions about offices. And what about when kids go outside for gym class? And so we're clarifying those things and working through those. We've got a lot of good discussions with principals. We'll have that cleaned up in a week or...
The estimates that you're gonna see in those committee meetings are specific to these seven Controlled Entrance projects, though.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'll move on to revision to policy and Rule sixty-eight thirty-two.
Yep, and I believe this is one.
Yep, thank you. So we have a revision to a policy that had been originally approved in two thousand twelve. Due to federal and state requirements, we've needed to update this policy. We are...it was updated to ensure that we're in compliance with ADA requirements and our state statutes. It broadens the scope of facilities versus premises. And in doing so, it covers all spaces, not just our physical buildings, the grounds, vehicles, and other properties. And in the revisions, we ensure that students and individuals with disabilities have equal access to our activities, our services, and our spaces. So we really just updated language. There are...and we added a form that an individual would need to fill out in order to be approved for that animal to be used for service. There's a lot of red in this policy, but not a ton of change in this policy. We are asking for a first and second read at the September twenty-third meeting. So if you have questions between now and then, you could reach out to me. We're just hoping to get this in place sooner than later.
Questions for Wendy?
I will say that our nurses...actually, this came to us from a community member because we had listed some things that were very outdated in our policy. So that prompted the revision here, and then our nurses worked on this policy. So I can assure you that it is in compliance with all the pieces and parts. Our HR department has revised it, or has approved it as well because it's not only for students, but is for any individual with a service animal on our property.
Okay, next would be the revisions to policy and Rule eighty-eight fifty, School Board Committees.
And Carl and I kind of worked on this one, and Tanya did as well, so I can start. And then please jump in. So this one is a revision to our existing committee structure. So the rationale behind this...behind this revision is to move our agenda review meetings, pretty much to meld those with our committee meetings, and then increase the number of committee meetings. So the way it would work is that we'd be looking to add a committee meeting with the committees structured pretty much...pretty close to the way they are. There's some changes listed in the...in the rule that I can go over in a minute. But the idea would be to bring forward agenda items that are going to appear on an upcoming board meeting, the next two board meetings, to a committee, to have the committee discussion occur at that meeting. So for example, at the December, we...as we talk this through, I believe that December would be the earliest that we could get this off the ground, but because we have to notify...we'd have to recruit for the committees and do all of that work. But at the December committee meeting, we would go over the agenda topics for the December board meeting and the January board meeting. And then we'd have one in February, and we go over February and March. And then we'd have an April one and go over April and May. So we would have at least the beginning plan would be to begin with six committee meetings. We could add more if needed, where we would go over the topics. And I...through discussion, I guess our hope is that we could make the committee meetings more... I hate to say more meaningful, but I will say that. I hate to say that publicly. I think that would give more purpose to our committee meetings. And I think it could also help streamline some of our processes. So we have right now, basically, the...this agenda review is operating as a committee of the whole model, where we talk about the agenda, we get questions, and then we have a committee meeting that also works...doesn't...it's kind of spinning, and I really don't know if it really has a good...a well-defined purpose. So we really have two board governance models operating at the same time. And I think that trips us up on some things. When something gets referred to a committee, there's confusion. It's not as clear as the purpose, what the committee would actually do with it. So I think if we...through our discussion with Carl and Tanya, we brought this through leadership as well to get some ideas around it. I believe that...I guess my recommendation would be is, I think this is worth a shot, to help streamline our work and to make...give our committees more purpose. And we can always change it if it doesn't work. So at this point, I don't know, Carl or Tanya, if you'd like to add anything?
Yeah, well, first of all, thanks for, you know, expressing the openness and willingness to open up this policy. And, you know, like you said, with the intention of making the committees more productive. And I appreciate the chance to, you know, have a little back-and-forth dialogue on, you know, what we can do to make the committees more meaningful. I certainly agree with the aims of...I mean, effectively, what it does is restores a lot of the old policy language that we had originally had prior to, what I think was the rewrite back in like twenty fifteen or something like that. So going back a while ago. I did, after having a little bit of reflection since we last spoke, I just had two minor pieces of feedback. And I'm wondering if this is something that could be looked at or revised prior to us voting on it at the September board meeting. The sentence that says, "The board president shall appoint committee members and committee chairs in accordance with Rule eighty-eight fifty." The way that it was done in the past was, I think, the...it was the board president in consultation with the committee chair that made the appointments of committee members. And I thought that worked well because like, you know, obviously, committee chairs know their committee members, you know, and they kind of have a sense of the expertise that a lot of people, you know, bring to the table. And, you know, maybe there was times that, you know, for example, I chaired facilities, and I think I chaired policy at one...personnel policy at one point in time. I mean, I was more or less kind of trusted to be the point of contact on that, but there was also times where, you know, like maybe I missed something. So just having that consultation, that back and forth, so that, you know, like with the board president, just to make sure that like we're really capturing the essence of the community when it comes to having feedback. So I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe there's openness to doing that language. And then the other one, I don't know, this might open up a little bit of discussion here. I was thinking about the Curriculum and Program Committee. Also, I do have to say, as far as the committee structure, what the committees are doing, adding that legislative advocacy piece on all things external is really awesome because I think it's something all the committees should be doing. But the Curriculum and Program Committee, I was thinking back, again, historical knowledge for those of us that have been there. The district had done a pretty extensive curriculum audit back in twenty fourteen, I believe. And there was numerous recommendations that were to be implemented. I'm wondering if there is something to the effect of not like reviewing, re-reviewing that, that specific audit, but like, you know, curriculum audits generally, in the event that, you know, maybe we want to vet a new one or go back to the old one and see what some of those recommendations might have been. Because my understanding and feedback from people out, you know, there with, you know, some knowledge of the situation was that like there were some things that we were going to do, but some things kind of were left by the wayside. So maybe just kind of like, I don't know, just having a little, you know, I don't know, having more eyes on it. And this is going back some years, so, you know, I don't remember anything.
Believe that the committee structure then just kind of disappeared.
That might have been why, yeah.
Yeah, but I agree with what you're saying. I remember that so clearly because there was a lot of good community input.
And I would...
And a lot of good expertise there.
Right. I don't think we'd be opposed to it. I'm just wondering with some of the changes in standards. I mean, that would be prior to...
That's true.
The change in...I'm blanking on, please help me with that, Common Core.
Their standards, yeah. And I have never reviewed it. I'm sure Julie was, I mean, well aware of it. I certainly will pull it out and take a look at it with each of our adoptions. When curriculum comes due in the cycle, there is that year of reviewing current state and needs that our coordinators go through that whole process with their curriculum review team. So it does happen. I don't know to the depth of what happened in two thousand fourteen, though. And if those were some big overall generalities that were named in there, I don't know that. But I would say, specific to ELA, math, social studies, and science, our guidance is now in the...in the standards, in our state's standards, but I will take a look at things.
Sure. I mean, I guess if there's something that's not like super specific to like standards that have changed over the last several years, I mean, something generally about access or equity or whatever, you know, maybe we should be looking at it more closely with that.
And that is a...I'm sorry, that is a part of the review, the equitable piece and access. And all of those, those are all big considerations that the team, the content team does go through when they dive into a new adoption.
Sure, thank you. But yeah, that's generally just kind of some of the things that come to mind right away.
Bob?
I just had a...do we ever, for like that curriculum review like you're saying, like, so like, we just invented the new science for what, middle school, where they went to those books? Are we gonna look at that next year and see if that gotten a lot of negative feedback on that? Like, do we look back after, okay, we implemented this this year? And maybe that's not the best approach. Maybe we should go back to what we were doing last year. Do we do that? Or could that be something a committee...
So there's always that reflection piece that our team goes through. So it also...it's tricky because if you're on the adoption committee, you have the inside intel of the whole process. Not everybody chooses to go through that process so intimately. So I will say, the middle school science has had some pushback. But I just reviewed with Jen Lawler today, and we have more momentum and more commitment than what we had early...earlier established, that they would go through two modules, one in first semester, one in second semester as a get-your-feet-wet-with-this, learn it, let's develop it. And there are many teams will now recognizing that they're not going back to what they were doing. They're in it wholeheartedly, so...
Well, it's week two, too, so, yeah.
It's week two. It's week two. Professional learning is ongoing. So they...so those professional learning offerings will also deepen the understanding, give time for the preparation. I mean, that's...that's the bulk of that, right? Does anybody really have enough time to dig in wholeheartedly and build it as we go type thing? So, yep.
Right. I just...I just want to make sure. Cause I know we switch every, what, five years or seven years? We change, but sometimes I'm wondering like, maybe it wasn't worth the change. You know, maybe we're gonna save money and just...it's science, doesn't change much.
Sure. The...the cost of the platforms or the resources that we do use, though. So our standards don't change, you are correct. But those resources have a timeline and a shelf life to them. So, yep, we have a seven-year process. Our budget has been reduced to five hundred thousand versus two-point-three million. We are drastically paralyzed. So we are gonna have to elongate some of those adoptions and really... We are developing new, you know, a new timeline for all of that, every single subject, every single level, so.
Thank you.
Bob, you had, in a conversation earlier, you had mentioned the forty-five-minute times for the committees and whether or not that'd be sufficient and thinking about, yeah.
So when I chaired the personnel, it was my first committee, but like by the time you get done with introductions and hear what the committee has to say, you have like five minutes to go over what you're actually trying to get done. So to me, if this...I don't mind changing committees. I...I don't want everything to be done by committee. I think that the board still has a reason to be a board. But if we're gonna do committees, make it worth the time, you know what I mean? Like, the committee, like whoever's the chair should be in an email group with that committee, talking off time. Like, hey, this is what's coming up for the next one. Let's get this going. And I think that's where the chair could pick kind of who they had to work with, you know what I mean? Cause a lot of the committees are the same people, which thank God that we have some people that show up. But it'd be nice if we could get other people involved, different ideas, different views, you know?
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, go ahead, Carl. I'm sorry. Different point.
And I agree. I mean, I think if we could like cut down on the presentations and have more like action items, that would be sweet. For lack of a better term. The one thing that I wanted to ask and just like kind of put out there. So I saw in the agenda packet, you know, just, you know, making sure that we're putting that out there that the recommendation is to change from the committee of the whole structure, where we do the agenda reviews monthly, to having committees bi-monthly. I just want to hear from you, do you think there's going to be enough for us to talk about? Like, will you be able to anticipate what's coming in November and October?
Yep. And I, actually, I do have a document. My afternoon got crazy. Otherwise, I was going to put it up on the...up on the wall for everyone. But we do have...we pretty much have the...there's certain things that happen every year that we have to bring up and bring back. Stacy keeps track of this. We go over it weekly. So right now, I have a...we have a really good idea of the work that we need to hit. And so this was the point that I was gonna make, so I guess it is related, that I don't see everything going to committee, but I do see some things really needing to go to committee. So for example, the...the safety committee recommendations, that definitely should go to committee. A Head Start grant approval, we could probably...we don't need to bring that. That's a perfunctory task that the board does. So as we go through that process, I see myself meeting with the board president and saying, here are the items that are gonna be coming as part of the agenda setting. Here are the items that are becoming before. This is what I believe should be going to committee. This is the committee I believe it should be going to. Get thoughts, engage in that back and forth to set those, communicate that out with the committee chairs. And then, so that's how I see that working. But we do have, and there may be some things that come up that we don't, that we miss the cycle. And we'll...this is, I imagine that we're gonna go through a bit of a learning process here. I think, though, when I'm just going back to some of our board meetings where something was referred back to committee, I believe that this creates a much more rational... Rational's the wrong word. I'm sorry, strike that. Not rational, but it at least makes more sense.
Right.
For it to go back to committee. I wasn't saying that anything was irrational, but it just logical is the word that I'm looking for. Thank you. Logical, 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 logical. Logical, I meant logical, Jeff. But that gives us a much more logical place to send that. Also, I wanted to hit some...I wanted to talk about a couple of changes to the committees because we have had some changes.
If I could just ask real quick, just to that conversation piece. So like if there's a situation, like say, in November, if a board member requests for something to put on the agenda, whether or not it makes it to a committee would kind of just probably depend on the agenda topic, right?
Right, what the item is.
Might end up being one of those. You say, okay, let's send it to committee.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I guess...I guess if there's agreement with the person requesting or something like that. But I just wanted to confirm that. I mean, we're not gonna be able to anticipate every situation out this policy, but I just kind of wanted to just play out that scenario and see what, you know...
And then when it...if administration has a recommendation for the board at the meeting, they would then say, this went to the such-and-such committee, and they recommended it be passed. Okay.
Correct, yep. And I guess part of the motion could be, and maybe this is just a good practice that we get into, would be to, I suggest that we review this, this process. Let's take a look at it in a year. What worked, what didn't work, what needs to be changed, just so that we take a look at, you know, how we're doing in our practices. That's just a recommendation. take a look at, you know, how we're doing in our practices. That's just a recommendation. Um a couple of the changes that I wanted to hit on the committees um with the uh planning and facilities committee, we did for a while have charter review in there. Um at the, at last week, um Bill, uh Tarek and I met with the Harbor Side uh governance board, their charter board, um and they did vote and made a motion that was approved to move to a um to a district choice school. Um that would be in effect in second semester, so that there will be no further charters to review, so recommending that we drop that. Um also with personnel, um personnel and policy, I believe that's the way it was in the past. So if there is a policy that doesn't fit a particular, I guess my recommendation would be if there's a curriculum policy that goes to the curriculum committee. If there's a policy that really doesn't have a home, like maybe service animals would be one that could go to that committee. I'm not sure, but just as an example, because some of the policies that we have come up. Uh the question is, why did it go to that committee? Well, I think we need to have a policy, policy committee needs to have a home, you know, what are some of those policies that come up that don't have a home, so. Those are two of the other changes that I are on here.
And I saw an email from you that was information on WASB and policies?
Oh excellent, thank you so much. Um thank you for that prompt. So I did email WASB. Uh we do have a subscription to the Policy Resource Guide, the PRG. In that email, there's also a link to the PRG that all board members have access to. So you have access to it, you just need to log into WASB. Um you with your regular username and password, if you forgot that. Um there's also contact information in that email that's available. And I would suggest that if you have an idea for a policy or if you have, um that that is a great resource to use. Um they usually have some background information that explains the legalities surrounding the policy. Uh why is this policy the way it is? Uh what you can look out and then they usually, for some, most policies, not all, uh they do have uh various options that are all legally viable uh ways to go about. Um so I, that's just a, I think that's a great resource to help inform our policy discussions, our policy conversations. The one thing that I would, um that does get a little bit wonky to look at, their WASB numbering system and our numbering system don't line up. Uh so it is, you kind of have to search by the name of the policy to find out if WASB says it's twenty-seven hundred and we have it as thirty-five hundred, you gotta look at the name. Um but anyway, that's just a, neither here nor there, but just a heads up, so thanks.
All right, any questions then? All right, that brings us to um actually D, E and F. And they're all three resolutions and my question actually for the for the group here is the resolutions get put on the agenda because of what has happened in the past. So there might not be a resolution that you want because we haven't had it before. And there might be a resolution on there that some board member in the past wanted that we may not feel is necessary. Do you feel it's necessary for D, E and F? Not making any judgment here, just sort of like.
Not a F.
As as a.
I don't need a school board appreciation.
As uh somebody of the Italian-American community, I would like to read that resolution at this, at the September meeting.
And what about E? I I can't either. I'm I would, I'm German, I don't see a German one. It's just we can, we can kind of go overboard on this and we.
For me with them, if we're gonna do a resolution, we should do something with it. Like instead of it just being Polish, okay, well. Do something to.
It wa- it was put on because of a board member in the past who actually didn't care much for resolutions and sort of said, well, this is my heritage, why not put this one on? And I'm not sure if it was, I'm not sure how meaningful it is right now for for us. And I would say that to, I would be in favor of taking it off, but I don't wanna, you know.
Yeah, like I said, if we're not gonna do anything with the resolution, to me, they're just, we're just saying stuff.
Okay, so keep it, remove it, what do you?
I mean, if it's on the agenda, we should just have it on the agenda, but I think going forward, I I.
It was on the agenda because it was there last year.
Okay.
It wasn't like anyone requested it.
Okay.
They requested it like five years ago.
I don't know why I put my glasses on to push the button.
I think it gets tricky though if you start taking away like, if you have a Hispanic heritage and you take away Polish heritage, it's almost, I'm just saying it's weird to take one away.
Then then keep it.
It's almost like add everybody or don't have any.
I would, I was just gonna say, I think that's true of all of our resolutions. Once it's on, it's on for life. Um so if we want to change the process, I think is how we would want to go about it, where we would request annually. Um because some of these we've been doing for fifteen, twenty years and it's pretty much the same thing.
So I I would agree that they could be made into like learning opportunities or like maybe we have like a little showcase in the lobby of the ESC or something. I don't know, but just something like, it's a learning opportunity for folks that isn't just like something that's in the board agenda, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm not a crafty person. My mom's retired, she can, she does crafts, so I mean.
I say we have to dress up.
Sabrina, bulletin, bulletin board, bulletin board. Have your daughter do it.
I I can offer, um when I was in a different district, the way that the pals, the resolutions were used in that district would be to um endorse a piece of legislation. Um and then it would be, so if there was, for example, like the budget, um here is what the the school board would pass a resolution supporting or opposing parts of a of a uh bill or of a budget, and then it would be mailed to the representatives of that of the district as well as the governor or whomever, um so that it was the idea was it was an elected body communicating with another elected body. Um here are our needs, here's how you can support us, and that was how, I'm not saying that there aren't other ways to use it. I've seen, I've seen this as well. Obviously, we use it here um to promote and state what your values are. But I've also seen it used that way.
And we we used to do it in the past, Rebecca remembers, I think we had done that on Act Ten, we had done that with the voucher expansion. But we know some big legislations coming up, you know, they just announced they're gonna do like the Act Twenty of math, so, you know, that might be something we want to weigh in on, you know? What's that?
I did ask about that at the last WASDA updating night, they didn't have any information or hear anything, so I'm not quite, I don't know.
Well, the bills. They're they're waiting introduction, that's why, but I mean, but to that point, I mean, we know that some big education bills are coming up and we could use that as an opportunity to make our stance, it's a good idea.
Okay, so I am totally not clear. Uh my feeling is that we keep D, E and F and just in the future, look at making our resolutions meaningful. Okay.
We don't have to put them on just because they've been there.
Okay.
Like the ice bucket challenge that none of you did.
All right, we have no views and comments. Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.